The Board has reconvened from closed session and we will go ahead with the next item on our agenda, which is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the first closed session of the October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the second closed session of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
Don't move.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there any public comment this evening?
There might be, just let me just walk up. I don't know if there's anything else. Want me to go ask her if she wants to make a public comment?
Yes, please.
It's the scooter.
All right, we have one, one public comment this evening. Melanie Sleeper?
Hi, my name is Melanie Sleeper. I have four children in the school district, two at the high school and then two in dual language at Miller. And I prepared a little speech and I'm going to do it as best I can. I'm trying not to fall over on my scooter. Okay. I'm here today to ask a few questions about the district's decision to pivot back to virtual learning. Before I ask these questions, I would like to share with the Board these factual data points, which are all found by going to webpages as indicated in my citations throughout the comments. Per the DuPage County Health Department's reports to superintendents, they included that the COVID-19 activity resurgence in recent weeks is largely attributed to adult age groups, primarily the elderly and in long-term care facilities. The DuPage County Health Department also believes the current mitigation efforts being implemented in the public schools have been highly effective in slowing the spread of COVID-19. From the DuPage County Health Department and IDPH COVID dashboard, as of October twentieth, the youth positivity rate was in the minimal risk category. From the DuPage County Health Department, between March first and October thirteenth, long-term care facilities accounted for seventy-nine percent of the county's outbreaks. As compared to schools, which I'll add, have a very dynamic makeup in population, account for only point five percent of outbreaks. Only in recent weeks has the DuPage County Health Department updated these two categories and broke them down into even more detailed numbers, which includes specific dates from October sixth to October twenty. Of those outbreaks during this time, long-term care facilities make up forty-eight point one percent of the outbreaks. While public school settings make up less than half of a percent in outbreaks. Only listing, there were a total of two outbreaks during this time, with less than five positive cases resulting in those outbreaks. Until the twentieth of October, we were not given a breakdown as to the age ranges of the students in the, in the school setting. However, we now see public and private school settings account for less than a half a percent of outbreaks collectively and less than five confirmed cases, confirmed cases in both settings, public and private. When comparing our school district to a similar district, Lyle's statistics are as follows. They have two hundred and seventy staff with zero positive cases of COVID. They have fourteen hundred and forty students, three cases, all the same family, zero outbreaks. They differ in their format, formatting for their learning models. So their, their K-one hybrid model is five days a week. They get to eat snacks, they don't eat lunch, and they go from nine to one. There's no asynchronous learning. Two, grades two to five are hybrid, are in two sets of two cohorts. So they go two times a week alternating and they go from nine to three fifteen, four days a week. And then they're also doing concurrent teaching, so like what we're doing at our high school with Zooming and teaching while students are in the classroom. With the exception of Wednesdays, where their Wednesdays is all synchronous in the morning and then PM it would be our PLC time. All five of the days of the week are concurrent. For the teachers teaching the class and on Zoom, and they have very limited asynchronous time. Similar for grades six to eight, except they go to school from eight to three and then it's also concurrent teaching. And then for their high school, they have cohorts as well, synchronous learning, Wednesday shortened schedules and concurrent learning models. The difference in their school day for in-person is that it's only from eight to one, but there's very minimal asynchronous learning. The superintendent of Lyle, given the same information from the DuPage County Health Department, shared in recent weeks with all the superintendents, announced that they will continue with the hybrid model of learning as they, as the risk factors for both staff and students coupled with the protocols in place, the student and staff minimal risk categories according to the DuPage County Health Department and the number of outbreaks from October sixth to October twenty were enough evidence to make an informed decision about continuing hybrid learning. In looking at the school setting further, I gathered some additional data from our local private elementary school, Holy Trinity. They've been in school for nine weeks. Their enrollment is a hundred and sixty kids pre-K through eighth grade. And they are serving students of this community additionally. Many of those students have siblings at the high school or the junior high. Their student to teacher ratio is twelve to fifteen, depending on the grade level and what the protocols would accommodate. They've been in school a full day. They follow all DuPage County Health Department and IDPH guidance. COVID-19 rate among students is zero. COVID positivity rate among all staff is zero. They've had approximately thirty tests on their students and staff. Those numbers are not like which is which, how many who's been tested, it's not available, but they were all negative. The superintendent of the Catholic Schools for the Archdiocese of Joliet, Dr. Michael Boyle noted to all of his principals that the safety protocol and guidance given by the DuPage County Health Department are the exact ones that they've been using in their schools for the past nine weeks, which continues to put schools at an extremely small rate of transmission. And as a result, they do not need to alter their current course of action with the current learning model. Dr. Boyle's authority is recognized by the DuPage County Health Department in their guidance that school, school officials are encouraged to use their decision and expertise as to whether schools should stay open. Given all of this data, which are the most up-to-date statistics, literally I was like printing this as I was walking out the door. So some of this came off of their pages within the last hour. In the very most relatable in terms of school population and community, why did we decide to pivot back to full remote learning? This has been one of the biggest questions I ask and I ask it on behalf of our school community. The data has proven what we are doing is the bare minimum in regards to the amount of time spent in classroom asynchronously. The data shows that we are not required to pivot to remote. I attended fourteen conferences last week. I cannot tell you how many times a teacher hung their heads in disappointment because they feel that their quality of teaching has deteriorated and the engagement of their students is poor. Many teachers are saddened because they believe their ability to teach is hugely impacted by their lack of face-to-face interaction with my children. So I would like to know why, given the science, the data and the facts, are we not giving the kids their best possible shot in an in-person experience? Why, given the laws in the state of Illinois, are we not giving our children a fair and equitable education? Because I know our mission as parents, board members, administrators and community members, we have always strived to do more than fair or equitable. We've always gone above and beyond. So why are we giving the very least amount possible by the most restrictive means possible? I just don't understand. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It might be a little noisy exiting, I'm sorry.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Francisco Delgado, girls varsity soccer coach, Westmont High School. Christopher Pierce, boys sophomore basketball coach, Westmont High School. John Hanson, volunteer basketball coach, Westmont High School. Number two, approval of October two thousand and twenty expenditure report. Number three, ratification of September two thousand and twenty regular payroll. Number four, renewal of medical and dental insurance plans with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Number five, renewal of life ASD and long-term disability insurance with Dearborn National. And number six, renewal of vision insurance with IMED. Is there any one item that anyone would want pulled off for individual consideration? Is there any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, so look for a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Okay, and so we'll move to items that are for information and discussion. And one of the first items is the update on the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. And Jessica, you had asked for a particular item kind of discussion and thought it could be incorporated in with what Kevin was?
Yeah, honestly, and I was gonna kind of echo some of what our public comment was. So I think it would be best if we maybe hear what Kevin has to say first about the updates and then I might have a couple of questions about that.
Okay, good.
And I think, you know, I'll touch a little bit on, you know, some of the questions asked during the public comment. But we've been doing this at each of our board meetings, kind of giving an update on the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year. And so I always like to begin, and I know the Board has seen this a number of times, but just in case this is the first time somebody from the school community is listening in. But, you know, again, the Restore Illinois, there's five phases to it currently. Well, we slipped a little bit, we're no longer in a true phase four because now our region, there's additional constraints that are, are put on the region. But again, when you get to phase five, that's when you're resuming what we term normal school. And again, that won't happen until there's a sustained period of no new cases or if we have a vaccine that's available. And again, any decisions that we make as a district, we always consider the health and safety of our students and staff. We want to make sure that we have a meaningful, engaging academic experience for the students. We address the social emotional needs and we provide consistency, stability for all students and staff. And we continue to provide professional learning opportunities for our staff so that as we move through this environment, that they're better prepared for that. One of the, you know, in terms of decision-making, how we decide hybrid versus remote. And I'm gonna, hopefully this link will work. But in our hybrid plan, when we presented this to the Board back at the beginning of the school year. And, you know, the frequency asked questions. And at that time, we talked about, well, how do we determine when we make that move to hybrid versus remote? And I referenced at that time, the DePace County Health Department metrics. That's what we're gonna base our decision on. We look at what they put together. And so kind of as a refresher, the superintendents in the county asked the DePace County Public Health Department to kind of help us in our, in terms of our decision-making and help us with metrics and provide some, some guidance. And so they looked at the various metrics and they came up with, again, minimal transition, moderate transmission, substantial transmission. And at the time that we opted to transition to hybrid, which was October fifth, DePace County was in moderate transmission. And I can also share at that time, we were one of the first districts to make that move into hybrid. There are several districts that next week is intended to be their first week when they, when they make that move into hybrid. But the, and then the substantial transmission. What's happened over the last couple of weeks, and then this is what, and again, this is, this is guidance. The DePace County Public Health Department, I don't think would walk in and say, you as a school district need to go a hundred percent remote. But they provide the data for us, they provide us with the guidance and then the local school districts make their decision. But again, at the moderate level, that's when you can hybrid, again, implementing all the protocols which we have. And then as the county transitions to substantial transmission, then that's when a hundred percent remote learning, you know, that's when that needs to be considered because of the level of transmission. What's happened over the last couple of weeks, and these are always a week in arrears, what's posted. So last Monday, and we were tipped off on Friday that this is what was gonna happen, but last Monday through the nineteenth, these are the school metrics that the DePace County Public Health Department posted. And we moved into substantial transmission and that was because of the number of new cases per hundred thousand. And that's what pushed the, the county into that. This most recent Monday that they've posted, now we've got three of the six metrics that are substantial and then two of the metrics that were not moderate are now at the moderate level. And so again, this is because of the increase in, in transmission. The other thing that Melanie Sleeper references, that DePace County Public Health did share is that we are seeing an increase in school age students testing positive for COVID-19. And so that is happening in DePace County. In terms of our own district, since October fifth, when we went to hybrid, these are the number of students from each building that were sent home for having COVID symptoms. So they come to school, at some point in time, they report to the nurse that they're, they have symptoms. And so it's been a total of fifty-four students that were sent home. Of those fifty-four students, eleven were tested for COVID-19. And then there was one student that tested positive, but that student was remote. So there are forty-three students that the families chose to have the student quarantined for fourteen days because remote learning's an option. So rather than taking the student for a test, they're opting for them to go remote and not be tested. So this is one of the things that, again, the Health Department shared with the superintendents. The numbers they're confident are being under-reported and this is one of the reasons. So we have forty-three students who had symptoms and we don't know if they're positive or not. So we really don't know the number of students that are positive at this time because unless they're, they're tested, that doesn't come up as a positive. And so it's difficult to pinpoint that. In terms of our own staff, we've had one certified staff member that tested positive. We've had two that had to quarantine due to exposure. So that means a family member tested positive or they're in close contact with somebody who tested positive and so now they have to quarantine. And then we have ten certified staff who could not self-certify. Every day when our employees report to work, before they enter the building, they have to self-certify that they are, you know, COVID symptoms free. They haven't come in close contact with anyone. They haven't tested positive. They have to be able to answer, note to those questions. If they can't answer those questions, then they can't report to work. And so typically what ends up happening then is they either have to be tested and test negative and then they can come to work. Or they have to have something from a doctor saying that their symptoms are something other than COVID-19. So even though those individuals are not quarantining or testing positive, those are employees that we have to fill with subs when they can't report. For our non-certified staffs, and now you're talking, anything from food service, custodians, secretaries, teaching assistants, we've had four positive tests, three that have quarantined, again, because of close contact. And then we've had, you know, thirteen that could not self-certify and again, that they have to wait until they test or if they get something from a doctor. The other information that the DePace County Health Department wants school districts to start sharing is, is part of our message. You know, in terms of why the virus is surging, well, basically it comes down to, everybody knows what they're supposed to be doing and not enough people are doing it. So not enough people are wearing masks, not enough people are maintaining social distance, proper social distance. Not enough people are washing their hands. Social gatherings, you know, where the fatigue is setting in. You know, people don't like being apart from other people. And, you know, during the summer, social gatherings, you could be outside. Well, with the weather, that's becoming less and less likely. COVID-19 this year is the third leading cause of death, you know, behind heart disease and cancer. In DePace County, the last thirty days, there's about a hundred and fifty-seven percent increase in hospitalizations. And the increase is not due to the testing, that, you know, your positivity rate is independent of the, the number of tests. And so there is definitely a surge in the area. I can also share with you, you know, there are some districts who have not made their ultimate decision if they're going remote at this point or if they're gonna stay hybrid. Some are waiting for, you know, next Monday to see what the Health Department reports. The other thing that, you know, you kind of see happening, the whole point of having the framework for school districts to work with was to try to keep all the school districts on the same page. And obviously that's not happening because every district is, is making their own decisions and they need, need to. Some districts are looking at, you know, what's going on in their local community in terms of the number of cases and so forth. And the, the one thing that I'm always cautious about with regards to that is, you know, Westmont, we, we don't live in a bubble. You know, you know, how many of our board members work outside of Westmont? Or, you know, your family members work outside of Westmont? Or you travel outside of Westmont? Same thing is true of our school families. You know, they work in different parts of the county, they work in different counties. They're taking their families to different areas. And so it's very difficult to say because, you know, in one community, currently the transmission is low, therefore, you know, everything's fine. Because again, you know, the, you know, people aren't traveling. The one thing that DuPage County Health Department did say to the school districts is, you know, with the increased transmission, what you know will happen is there will be an increased number of people entering your schools that have been exposed or are positive for COVID-19. And so you need to make sure that, you know, you're prepared for that and you can handle that, that increase. And so that's what, you know, potentially will be happening over the next couple of weeks as the numbers are increasing. You know, we said early on, back in, I think it was August, might have been September, when we were talking about the hybrid model and what we'd make the transition, we said that the metrics that were provided by the DePace County Health Department, those were going to, you know, that's how we're gonna make our decisions as to when it's appropriate to be remote and when it's appropriate to be hybrid. And so, you know, the metrics that have been provided for us show that the county's at substantial level of transmission. And so, you know, you know, I feel it's safest for us. It's, it's again, not just about students and children and how the virus impacts them, but our buildings are stacked with adults, you know, and adults of all different ages. And they have, in some cases, conditions that make them more vulnerable than, than others. And so all those things are, are taken into consideration. And I know I said this earlier in the year, I may have said this last spring, but, you know, superintendents, you know, give us a snow day to make a decision on. You know, I'd take that any day of the week. Making decisions about, you know, what we could be doing for our students and our staff during a pandemic, you know, this is new territory for all of us. So that's the information I have. I don't know if there's any questions or?
I do have a couple of questions. So I guess my first question is, and thank you so much for all of this information and these updates and for continuing to make really difficult decisions. Just the first one I'm wondering about is what the content? Just the first one I'm wondering about is what the contact tracing has looked like as far as the students who are leaving with symptoms, the staff who are testing positive, the student who tested positive, although that student wasn't even in the building. So, I don't, I mean, obviously, they contracted that outside of the school. But I feel like that is such a huge piece of information that's missing here, that is vitally important to figure out whether or not it's safe to be in the building. So is there more detailed information about the contact tracing and where these people are contracting COVID?
It's, most of the cases have been outside the district. There's one case, and I don't want to go into too much detail to protect a person's privacy, but there's some disagreement as to whether or not it was from the school or outside the school. But part of the challenge with the contact tracing, and I'm not saying that this is any of the individuals that have tested positive, but the health department is not getting great cooperation from people. In some cases, the individual's hanging up on the health department, in some cases, it's none of your business. There's a somewhat of a culture that you don't want to get anybody in trouble. Or, I don't think this is the case in our district, but there have been other districts where a parent has tested positive, the family did not notify the school district and continued to send the children. And then somebody outside the family notifies the school district. And, you know, so the contact tracing, I mean, we don't have any reason to believe that it start, you know, any of these cases were from our buildings. But, you know, that's not with 100% certainty.
Well, there are so few cases, so I feel like that's also, you know, good. And I hear you when you say that, you know, of the 43 who had symptoms who chose not to get tested, but they also then don't have to call the Department of Public Health and do contact tracing. So, I mean, that, I feel like that number is kind of useless to us. In my mind, there are zero students in the buildings who have gotten COVID at school. And I think that's significant.
That's making an assumption, though. That's the problem with all, for sure, any disease process. That, especially infections, that you, you're working with numbers, and people are trying to make the best predictions and plans with that, but you don't have actual, you don't have everyone that says they have symptoms, everyone that reports it like they should. So you're working off a group, especially with this disease. We, the biggest thing is, the answer is, we don't know how it's going to affect, is it changing, is it not? And with all those unknowns, and using only the data you have, you know, I think that number is important, because I didn't actually think of it that way, knowing that 43, but it reminds us that that's a number that we have of symptoms that we don't know.
So instead, so instead of assuming that maybe they're not COVID, we're just going to assume they are? We're going to make the other assumption?
That's just a number that we know has symptoms, or that's just a number that, if they did test, it'd be great to know, they're all zero, but we don't know. So it's just saying.
Just like it's maybe not fair to assume that they're all COVID, I don't think it's fair to assume that none of them were COVID. And that, and that possibly, a couple of those students, one was positive, and, you know, another student caught it from that student. We don't know, you know? And so, you know, I don't think it's fair to make either assumption.
Right. Yeah, I agree. I mean, I guess, to be completely honest, I'm just struggling with the fact that, I mean, and I get it, we made the decision with the hybrid to say, we're going to use these metrics. But now we've seen schools that have been in session since the beginning of the school year, we gave it two weeks with minimal, no transmission potentially on campus. And then, you know, we pivoted according to what we would say we would do, but I think we really need to talk about getting these kids back in the building as soon as possible, which, as these words are coming out of my mouth, it feels very counterintuitive, given what's going on around us, so I feel like a crazy person. But, you know, I just, based on the data, based on what we're seeing happen around us, I think it comes down to the people that are shuttering their doors, and I feel heartbroken for these people, but the bars and the restaurants, that, we should be the very last people to close our doors. And I think that we owe that to our kids. So I would really like us to just consider, you know, how we're making that decision to keep kids in all remote or hybrid. And I think that, that is a very, there's a tremendous sense of urgency. We've got to decide that soon and talk about it.
Well, and I think one of the things is, I mean, there's, there's no testing going on in the schools. So with so many kids, and many of them asymptomatic, you really don't know what the outbreak situation is there unless you have a test result for that individual student and a cluster of students. So when you say outbreaks, there's no outbreaks in schools, the only way you're defining an outbreak is by testing and a positive result. And if you're not testing, you're not going to know that information. So it sounds good to say that there's no COVID in our schools, but we really don't have the data, the solid data that backs that up with testing. So if we tested all of our, everybody in our school community, I'm sure we would find positives. And then from there, you would start, that's where the contact tracing would start at a positive case. So we're not getting those results, the school's not responsible, we can't force anyone to take a test, right?
Right.
And so, and unless there was something that was very inexpensive that you could do, that was very reliable, but when the students came in the door and three times a week, they're tested, right? You're welcome to come in if you have a negative test, right? And that way, you could, you could be more certain. But that doesn't exist now. So it's, it's, I would love to see our students back in school. At this point, I don't want to seesaw, though, you know, and then like, next week, okay, you know, everyone else is staying in, and then we decide to go back next week, and then another week passes, and all the other districts say, ah, we're out. You know, so, I'm open to discussing as we go along and as the year progresses, and as time, you know, as weeks go by, you know, are we, are we at the right place? Are we doing the right thing? Have we done the right things? Do we need to make a change? But I do want to be cautious about being too, you know, up and down with our, our plans. It is very difficult to, obviously, very difficult to, to switch.
Yeah, that's one of my biggest concerns with making the switch, is that it would be too much change for students and teachers and families to their schedule. But, you know, I just, I'm a firm believer in mitigation, and I commend the district for the way that they've followed safety protocols and made it safe for students to get in the building with masks and with being socially distant and with the, with all their cleaning protocols. That, to me, is the key to stopping the spread of it. And the problem is that people are not following those mitigation practices outside of school. And I guess I also just hope that the community hears that also, that, you know, everybody who wants kids back in school needs to be not going out and meeting with these large groups and going to restaurants and bars and thinking, I don't really need to wear my mask. And that is going to get a lot harder in the next few months. And so it's kind of, you know, just a plea to people to, you know, this is what we have to do to get the kids back in the building. It's very important.
I, I, go ahead, Adina.
You go ahead.
You go.
As I say, I agree with, you know, and like approve of the things that you're doing. Like you made the point that we made the decision to go hybrid on October 5th with the plan, but actually, that plan was two weeks before that. And so, we were like, or mostly, we were coming up, what ways can we go back, send our kids back to school? So this planning has been even before October with the set plan. And we were waiting the two weeks before to say, okay, yes, it's the goal to send them October 5th. So you had to work with something, you had to, you asked for data to use. And we used that throughout this time, like you said, and we went back before a lot of other districts did. On the side of, I'm someone, I want my kids in school, too. I think they do learn better, or I think we all know that. And one thing I just asked, kind of pushing, like what can, is there anything else we could look at? For DuPage, I know a lot of times with the regions and what the governor's set for. DuPage by itself, it's not sitting pretty, but is there any thoughts to just look at DuPage? Because we're combined with the King County.
King, yeah.
I don't think this would help this week, but I don't know if it's something, if we isolate just DuPage to look at for our metrics? I don't know if that's something they thought about.
These, these metrics are only DuPage. They don't, the DuPage County Health Department doesn't pull in the King County. They're just focused on, on DuPage. But that, you know, and that is something, I mean, we can have the conversation, you know, and before I commit to anything, I'd want to, you know, pull in other people, but have the conversation and see if, you know, if it starts trending in a positive direction, you know? Do we think that's the time to bring the kids in? So, again, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to do it week to week because I think that is a little bit too, you know, flipping back and forth like that. And so, we said we would give parents a week to tell line of childcare before we made the transition, and we did that. This is a two-week period for us to look at our protocols and to look at the information and the data. And then we'll make a decision if we, you know, can we bring the kids back in hybrid? But that's, you know, a conversation I want to have with, with others and, you know, take a look at and see. I know some, some districts, and again, it's, it's, it's been interesting because when the metrics first came out, this is something that all the superintendents were asking for when the metrics came out, it was apparent that not everybody was thrilled with the metrics. And so then it was a practice of, you know, where are the loopholes? Where are the, you know, those types of things? And so, as I said, some superintendents are, are, okay, I see what those metrics are, well, I'm going to come up with some of my own metrics, you know? And, and again, I, you know, I think we have to be cautious about that because, again, it's, the virus isn't, just doesn't stay in one area, you know? People just don't stay in one area. And so when you start to do that, it does, I think, you know, potentially could, you know, increase the risk for, for your district. And so, but I know some, some are, like I said, some are waiting for another week before they make the decision. Some, when it was one metric, that wasn't enough, that one's substantial, but now when it's multiple metrics, now it's kind of like, okay, now, you know, we're going to make that decision, so.
And the way we have it set now, is it looking at more than one? Or do, if, if one goes substantial, that...
Right now, if one goes substantial, then it's deemed that the, it's been upgraded to substantial transmission.
That's, I don't know if that's something we want to look at, is it more than one? Like you said, look at trends.
Right.
That would be something to discuss.
So Kevin, I just wanted to, first of all, say I agree with the decision to have us go back to full remote. I think we did what we said we were going to do, and I think that's really important, that in a situation like this where there is a lot of confusion and a lot of moving parts, that we say what we mean and mean what we say. And so I commend you for moving forward with that very controversial decision. I, I think it's important that we have protocols in place and that we're looking at what we're going to base our decision on and being consistent about that. And I, I think it's okay for us to pause at moments in time and look at, should we be adding additional factors to our decision-making process? And do we have better data, you know, deeper data to go back and look at, you know, different factors? If we can now trace, you know, exactly where the population, you know, the virus is, is most consistent and concentrated? You know, things of that nature. Maybe there are some things we should add to our protocols in order to make sure we are being thorough. But I, I think it is super important for us to continue as a board and as a district to set those protocols and be consistent about adhering to them. And, you know, that might mean that we do things differently than districts surrounding us, but we'll also be being clear with our community and being consistent with how we're addressing the issue. And I think that's very, very important right now. I also just want to address this idea that, you know, we should, I respect the idea of getting the kids back in school as quickly as possible. And everybody is sort of living in this space where we're, we're assuming that right now, the best possible place for our students is in person, in the classroom, and that that's going to provide the most equitable experience across our community. And I guess I want to just say that I frankly am not sure whether we're overstating that right now, or whether actually, given all of the things that our kids are dealing with and that our teachers are dealing with, if, to Joel's point, the consistency might be more important than getting them back in person. And maybe it's different at different grade levels, but I guess I just want us to pause on that a little bit. Like, I understand in a traditional year, having kids in the classroom is definitely the best thing for their education. This is not a traditional year, everything is different. And, you know, maybe we, we need to continue to look at how well our students are performing, both those that are, have been, were in person for, for those three weeks and the students who were remote for those three weeks. I mean, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, like, how do we really know that from an education standpoint, getting them back in person is for sure the thing that is best for them holistically? And I don't want us to assume that that's the case, because I'm not sure that it is, especially if we continue to go back and forth, if our teachers are super stressed, if the kids are super stressed, if what they're doing in the classroom is sitting on Zoom, just like they would when they're home. Like, is it worth the risk at that point? And so I, I guess I want to pause, us to pause on that and think about that a little bit as we contemplate, you know, where we go next. And really think about the back and forth and what that means for us. So, you know, I don't, I don't necessarily have the answers, but that's the lens that I'm looking at, the equity piece from, and the, you know, quality of education piece from, is not just that, you know, 100% getting our kids back in the classroom is, is the best for both quality and equity.
Laura, Laura, I just wanted to say, like, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you about, we did what we said we were going to do, and I think that was the right choice. Because I agree, you know, to have said to the whole community, this is what we're, how we're going to decide to go into hybrid and then not do that, I think is, does not look good. I guess what I'm asking is, now that we're living in it, to reconsider. And, you know, the consistency piece, I think, is a valid point, absolutely. What we know as teachers and administrators living in this is that consistency is not a thing that exists during a global pandemic. And every teacher's probably least favorite word right now is pivot. But there is a lot, it's probably everybody's least favorite word right now. But unfortunately, that's the life that we're living in, is a lot of pivoting, depending on the circumstances. And now that we're living in this school year, I think we just need to, you know, it, it's not like we are faced with something that's static. And so, we can come up with a policy for deciding to go hybrid and just not revisit it, we're good. This is our policy for every time there's a global pandemic. I think because the situation is so dynamic, therefore, how we approach the decision-making is unfortunately going to also have to, I think, be perhaps a little bit dynamic. And speaking to the, you know, the quality of the education and, you know, I don't love when people rely on anecdotal evidence, but I'm going to use a little bit here. It hands down is a better experience for the students to be in person with their teachers. I mean, the students love being in person with their teachers, the teachers do. And if, if the students are in the classroom on Zoom, and I, you know, I don't know a lot about what's happening as far as at the high school and junior high when the students are in person, but I would argue that there are alternative approaches. I'm not sure why they are on Zoom if they're in person. And so I, you know, I think that's something else to perhaps look at, is what are the teaching strategies that are taking place? And again, I can't say enough good things about what I've seen. And again, I can't say enough good things about what I've seen as far as what's happening in the elementary school. My daughter learned to read this year out of nowhere, so that's amazing. And I commend her and also her coach at Westmont Yard, who's helping her along with all of her e-learning and sounding out words with her. But anyway, I just wanted to share my thoughts on that, and I would just hope that, while I understand the importance of consistency and not doing a lot of the back and forth, we're not in a time that is consistent. We unfortunately need to get uncomfortable and let go of that, I think, a little bit in order to do what is the best for our students. They are suffering socially and emotionally like I've never seen, and it is heartbreaking, an entire generation.
So, I wanna kinda just touch on a couple things. So I do appreciate us sticking to our word, right? I've heard a lot in the last couple of weeks, who made this decision, why did we make this decision? And I keep hearing the word "decision" as if it was made this past Monday. And I keep reiterating that that decision was not made this past Monday. That decision was made September 22nd, I believe it was, when we agreed to this plan. And we followed through on this plan. And we agreed to this plan earlier than almost every other school out there. We were some of the first back to get our kids into the schoolroom. We were one of the first to come up with a hybrid plan, adjust it 97 times, and then finally approve it. And I think that is awesome, and I really love that we stick to our word. We now have some hindsight, and we now have a little bit of something to take a look at. I would like to see us adjust our language in some way, that it's not automatic, or it's not necessarily automatic. Because I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with the Health Department asking that the schools say the same thing, but then seemingly put a different thing in their press release. I'm really struggling with that press release around them saying, this is long-term healthcare facilities, and not choosing to speak about how they think things are being under-reported in the schools. Because that seemed to be a lot of the reasoning behind a lot of the schools continuing on their hybrid plans, even though some of them haven't even necessarily started the actual in-school portion of their hybrid plans. I'm struggling to kind of put that in my heart. I'm concerned about the Windsock effect. I'm greatly concerned about the back and forth, as we've talked about. It's in the FAQ, how many times can we go back and forth? I think that answer might be like one or two. But that is, that's very concerning, and especially on, as a mom of younger kids and seeing a lot of other younger kids. I can't speak a whole heck of a lot to the high school students, and I can't speak to a lot of junior high students because I don't personally know many of them. But so I would like us to revisit that language and how we do this. I'd love to see, Lyle does have a great dashboard about their cases and like who's been sent home. I'd love to see that live on our website. I like seeing the weekly metrics, but I struggle to see the weekly metrics and not compare them to a previous week's metric. So, okay, we had 43 this week. What was it last week? So that I can understand what that increase was in folks that were sent home and maybe not tested, right? Was it 42 last week? And so that's really a net one person, and maybe we compare that. You know, I'd like to see our metrics and the DuPage metrics in the same place, but I'd also like to see them kind of lined up. And I think that will be important. And I'm a data person, so I love data, and I like to look at it. I think that would be important to understand how we're trending as a school. I understand that it's really challenging for us to talk about Westmont metrics because we only really service like a square of Westmont, and we have a lot of Westmont that is not serviced by CUSD 201. And so that's really, that makes our metrics even harder to understand because we have a higher proportion of long-term care facilities in Westmont as a whole, and the fact that we don't service all of Westmont. It kinda makes our numbers even harder to like tease out. So it almost makes, for me, the district numbers more weighty. So, I struggle with some of that stuff. I struggle with the Health Department in understanding why they wouldn't kind of, you know, put that message forward, why they'd give you guys that message and not the public that message, not like in bold. But so, one other thing that I hear, or am hearing, is that our schools are staffed with adults who come from all over the place. Amazing adults, dedicated adults, but adults who understand what the word pivot means and understand that it's a temporary term. But the people that we are servicing are children who do not understand what that means because they can't, because they're not capable of it. I'm a mom of young kids, so I'm feeling this real strong, but I know that this happens at all ages. My kids don't understand this is temporary. They don't understand that this is just 2020. They can't say hashtag 2020 stinks and laugh about it. Because as our educators know better than anybody else, the kids live in today. And I'd like to think that the adults in our community can think about the kids more. More in how they're choosing to mask, more in how they're choosing to respond, more in how we're choosing to think. You know, our guiding principles is maintaining the health and safety of all of our staff and students. And the second one is providing that meaningful and engaging academic experience. I'm concerned that we are not maintaining the emotional health of our students, especially the younger kids, who really cannot comprehend what we are in right now. And, you know, Jess, you mentioned Zoom in the classroom. From a meaningful, engaging academic experience, I'd like it, and maybe this gets to my end question, can you expand, what does the in-person experience look like for the kids? And is it different at each school? I have heard different things anecdotally from my own kids, from other kids. Help me understand, because I have heard the Zooming in the classroom. Don't forget your headphones, right? So if I'm on a computer in the classroom, how's that different than being on a Zoom at home? And like, my older son greatly prefers being on Zoom in a classroom because he's about done with mommy, which is A-OK. But how is that different for them? And is it different at each of the grade levels? Why is it different? So what does this educational experience really look like hybrid? What's their instruction time versus their remote time? How is that happening? Can you expand that? I'm sorry, that was a real long...
Not off the cuff like this, okay? Because as you suggested, you know, different grade levels, it can look a little different. One of the challenges that our teachers have because we have to offer a remote experience, that's required. And then you have students who are in-person. And so, in some cases, we're asking our teachers to instruct the students who are in front of them and at the same time, they have students at home. And that's where sometimes the technology comes in. Because you can have students who are joining you remotely, and at the same time, you're teaching the students in front of you. That doesn't mean that there isn't interaction between the teacher and those kids in school or that, you know, they're not providing, you know, support to those students. But there are times that, yes, the student's on a device. Because we have students at home that are on devices, and so we have to provide that experience, you know? Depending upon the grade level, it's roughly, you know, it probably breaks out to about a three-hour day in-person, and then the afternoon is remote experiences. Minimally, it totals five hours.
Five hours asynchronous, five hours synchronous? Because I know there was, didn't the state of Illinois change something?
It's gotta be, I think, a minimum of two and a half hours synchronous.
For a five-hour total?
Right, for a five-hour total. And so it does vary a little bit, you know? And so, if you, again, if you look back at the hybrid plan, each of the buildings kinda rolled out what that student experience is like for each of the buildings.
And remind me, the two and a half hours synchronous, five hours per total, is that the same all grade levels? Or was it different at the, was it different at K and 1?
Not anymore. It was at 1, last spring it was. Last spring they had, and at that time, there was maximum. There was different maximum amount of time based upon the age of the student. Now, this year, it's, you know, the, it's the same for all grade levels. It has to be five hours. And then it's the minimum of two and a half synchronous, and then the remaining time can be asynchronous.
Okay. And then, so I would like to understand more, and definitely as we continue with our school updates, what our instructional time looks like? Would you say that, are they getting on average, do you think, more instructional time remote or more instructional time when they're hybrid? Or is it the same?
It varies, well, again, it varies from building to building and what the experience is. At the elementary level, it's more instructional time remote than in-person. And part of that is due to the protocols that need to be in place. So, the temperature checks take time. You know, the whole self-certification process in the morning and then the, at the end of the day, you know, how we have to safely let students leave, socially distance. When you're remote, you don't have that time, you know, that's needed. So, at the high school level, if you remember, the model there is an AB. So, the students are in-person two days a week, and then they're remote three days a week. But their classroom teacher is with a group of students. When they're on a remote schedule, the classroom teacher is available the five days a week to engage with students. And so, again, it's a different experience. You know, there's definitely, you know, everybody agrees in-person is the better. But it's kinda like what Laura is pointing out. You know, we make the assumption that, you know, in-person is the, you know, the best. But if you're looking at time, you know, instructional time, the remote experience might provide more instructional time. You know, it's different instructional time, so.
But instructional time does not necessarily equate to growth for our students. The amount of instructional time does not necessarily equate growth with our students. Because if someone doesn't connect with you remotely, it doesn't matter how many hours they get. So, are we, can we continue the conversation on different grade levels, having a different experience?
I can bring that back to the admin team and, you know, and we can have that conversation. You know, I know there is some conversation about, even earlier on, bringing in different students at different points in times. And I know other districts have done that. That's a conversation that we can have and take a look at, you know?
I really think, especially with the younger kids, they cannot handle the back and forth. It's really, really detrimental to them. And then, so that's a concern and a question, especially because it seems that our metrics are gonna continue going up if we can have that conversation back about different ages having potentially a different experience or adjusting that differently. And then, I've totally lost my train of thought on that last question that I had. Yeah, move on, sorry. Totally lost it. If I get it back, I'll ask it again.
So Kevin, I feel like we're kind of revolving around, like, do we feel like we should revisit what our protocols are? I have no problem revisiting. The point's been made that we're in a fluid time. I think we need to be fluid. But I do think as we revisit, we need to consider whether fluidity in terms of how we're addressing our students is actually best for them. So I think that definitely needs to be part of the conversation. And at what point does that fluidity become detrimental to them instead of better? So that needs to be part of the conversation. I also think it would be good to Leah's questions, it would be good for us to, we're all making our own inferences and giving our own opinions on what is best for our students right now. But we don't really know from the principals and the administration what's been working in this environment. This is a totally new environment for everybody, and we see what we see as parents. And so we know what's best for our own kids, but we don't really know. So maybe we do need to kind of hear an assessment from the administration of what's happened so far. I hate to add more to your plate, but I guess the question is, do you think we should reevaluate the protocols? And then do you think we could get an assessment from the administration on what's actually been working and what hasn't during this time?
And I think the sure answer to both of those is yes. I think it's always, you know, it's always good to, to, you know, we're moving through this, you know, this is the first time we made the decision to go remote. So I think it is a time to kind of assess and see, okay, is this, you know, is this working for us long-term? Is this how, you know, we wanna operate? But I think, you know, also getting feedback from the teachers and from the administrators about, you know, how is it going? Because, you know, I honestly, I hear, you know, some teachers think that, you know, remote, they'd rather just be remote because of trying to balance this, having some of your kids remote, some of your kids in-person. I mean, I, and I think you know this, our staff has never worked harder. I mean, and there's a question if it's sustainable. You know, is the hybrid model truly sustainable? And for how long is it sustainable? And so that also, I think it would be good to get that feedback and get that input and see, you know, now that we've been kinda living in this world, you know, what that assessment is.
I would just add to that, I think, anytime we're kind of checking in that way, that we should include all of our stakeholders, including students and parents in terms of what's working and keep the surveys or whatever information we gather kind of similar to just see what they're feeling. But yeah, I agree, it'd be really helpful to get more details about what's happening in those two situations. With regards to teachers never having worked harder, yes, 100% true. Unfortunately, what I've learned as a teacher is that hybrid half-day, full-day, alternate, rotating block, there's no winning as a teacher right now. It's gonna be the most stressful experience we've ever had, ever, no matter what happens. And I think, you know, kind of to that end, even for the students, and we're thinking about how these changes impact them, same thing, being remote, being at school, it's not gonna be good for them. So we just need to do whatever we can to just, to try and get through this. So I appreciate, you know, I think we have some good solid steps to look at this and get information and kind of reassess as quickly as we can.
Yeah, and thank you Laura for putting some words to like what I was like rounding about. I appreciate it. Your experience helps me in that way. Yeah, this is the most stressful time for our teachers, for our parents, for our administrators, for every, for children, for their grandparents, for all. Yeah, now that we have experienced both, I'd love to get stakeholder input. I think Jess, you bring up a really, really solid point of bringing up all stakeholder input. We do run a risk when we only talk to one stakeholder, one group of stakeholders that we're leaving others out, and that is not our job because we are a part of the public and we've gotta help with that. And I did think of my other thing. So, when we go hybrid, remote, hybrid, remote, et cetera, I was concerned that the special ed's needs of the students, the IEP needs of the students, the 504 needs of the students, didn't kind of like automatically go back to their last known, like, it seemed to like pop back to like beginning of the school year. And so, the special needs, the special needs students... And so the special needs, needs, the special needs students went, went from hybrid services to the back to the beginning versus remote services. And we didn't, and I realized we didn't talk about that, right? Retro, hindsight's 2020. We didn't talk about what happens with like the small groups of I E P students that we had coming in to the buildings that we were working on. Do they go back to the beginning, or do they go, do they kind of revert back to right before we went hybrid? That is, if they were a afternoon kid, they were in class, or they came in in the afternoon. Does that make sense? So, um, I, I would like us to, to, to look at or get some more understanding around that so that when and if we go back to hybrid and then have to pivot again, those kids who need more services, um, don't get as thrown. Yeah, yeah, that was, and we didn't talk about it.
Are they doing small groups this week?
Not, not, uh, not this week. Uh, part of it is a transportation issue. That's one of, again, that's all this we're learning, right? And so, um, part of it is, you know, we, we worked out transportation for the small groups. Then it was a monumental task that Kim and Anderson was very much a part of to get, uh, transportation settled for hybrid. And now, you know, work, we work with an outside contractor, and so, and they're working with other districts. So it's not like they're solely at our, you know, hey guys, now we need this, and they say, you got it. So there's a little bit of a delay this time, but the plan is by the end of next week to be back to small groups. But it's just, you know, working out those logistics.
And so, I mean, the way I look at this, I, I just think we're at the very beginning of an upward trend, and I don't see, you know, a lot of discussion of, I think more schools will probably be dropping out than looking to get back into, um, you know, regular, more regular attendance situation. So, you know, our discussions at the board table, I definitely think we, we obviously need to keep, um, you know, getting updates and all of that, but I, I don't know how, how good it's going to do to have a comparison of the, of the couple of weeks that we were in hybrid learning, and how great was that compared to, you know, remote learning? I just don't know if that's a conversation that we have enough time.
Yeah.
With, to really make a decent assessment of, and, and what will it all mean if, if, if the trend keeps going upwards and we're, we're unfortunately end up staying remote, which I hope, I mean, I, I, I hope it doesn't happen. It's just, one of the reasons I wanted to go hybrid as early as we could, because I felt we would be at this point. Only I was kind of hopeful we would be at this point in maybe November, December.
Yeah.
And not right now. So, we're caught, caught, caught off guard, no matter how good you, you tried to plan, but, um.
I also want to speak to like kind of our community too, that, um, I think the plan, even if it stands, it's a good plan. We didn't look at one metric, we're looking at a series, and then we, last week, we knew that we're trending up, and it's not, you know, but we are, when the previous weeks when we first started hybrid, we were good, well, um, we were okay. We were able to look at, we saw some numbers going up, and it's moderate, but we didn't knee jerk and say, okay, that's it, that's in this hybrid, um, program and go back to remote. We looked at several things. And if you look at all the lines that, you know, posted, you know, most of them are at, um, moderate to substantial. They've gone up, so it's just, I don't want people to look at it as knee jerk changes. Something that you take every week and strive, like you said, we're getting, we're learning, we are learning from other schools. It's not enough to make, you know, a statistically significant, um, outcome measure. It's just still more information coming in, and we're learning, so.
Okay, any other ti, uh, questions or comments on this discussion item?
Can I, just one real quick thing? This is not related to the discussion, but one thing I, we're going to, uh, communicate this to our families, um, starting tomorrow, so it's kind of being beta tested tonight. But in this whole proc, well, the process of sending students home and telling parents their options and so forth, there's a lot of questions and, and, you know, parents are trying to find the information and so forth. And so we did make a new tab on the website, COVID update. And, um, when you click on that, now we've got, you know, everything right there. So it's, you know, much easier to navigate all the different, uh, um, you know, Q and A and when students need their, um, uh, what else was, what am I looking for? Quarantine, um, when they need to quarantine, and so a lot of the information's right there now. So that's something new that we've added to the website, and again, we'll start promoting that tomorrow. But, um, and John Joenak did a lot of work with, uh, with this.
Thank you for that Kevin, I know that's.
Kevin.
Something we've been kind of asking about and then looking forward to kind of coalescing all that into one location for parent, as a parent resource, and that looks, it looks really good. Just thank you, and John too. All right, next item, uh, presentation of monthly financial statements for July.
And I guess.
Yep.
July, August, September?
Yeah, we're finally caught up, so it's been, uh, COVID has kept us incredibly busy. So first off, we'll start with the month of July. During the month, we received $60,000 from the state. There were $178,000 of fiscal year 20 payments and $1,950 of fiscal year 21 payments voucher, but not released. During the month, we also received two installments of the tax levy in the amount of $694,000. So total property taxes collected at the end of July were $13.2 million, which was a 53.45% collection rate, and that was comparable to the prior two years. And of course, during the month of July, the COVID-19 pandemic continued, and it impacts, um, the operational and financial condition of the district, as well as the state and the national economy. During the month, we saw that revenues in the Ed and TORT funds were higher than the prior year averages, and that's, um, a result of the variability of property tax receipts, um, for the past two years. There were $41,000 with the fiscal year 20 payments, um, vouchered, um, during that month. Again, the O and M fund revenues were a little bit higher because tax collections were a little bit higher, just slightly higher than they were the prior year. Transportation fund revenues fluctuate greatly, um, from year to year based on the timing of state payments. We had $136,000 of fiscal year 20 categorical payments voucher, but not released. And there were no fiscal year 21 payments vouchered at that time. In the Ed fund, expenditures were lower than the prior year average, and I'm also doing comparison, if you notice, with and without the contingencies. Since this year, we did put contingencies in, um, our budget, so you can look at that, um, in both cases, and that will help too. If in prior, in future years, we don't have contingencies, we can have some, a basis of comparison. The O and M fund, we were 3.61% spent to date, um, without contingencies, 3.43 with, and 3.29% last year. And again, um, in the transportation fund expenditures, there, you just can't predict them. There's no good trend because of the different payments. Our spending is going to be skewed this whole year compared to prior years because of COVID, where we had the shutdown. We didn't pay for all the transportation we normally do. We did amendments to contracts this year. We have not yet done them amendments. I hope to have them to you for, um, next month. But again, we're not seeing the same types of, of expenditure spending, so we haven't spent anything yet to date there. And, um, transportation even for, um, students in private placements varies greatly because a lot of those are remote. So, um, it, it's really going to be kind of all over the place this year. Does anybody have questions on July? Okay, then we'll move on to August. In August, we had $312,000 of, uh, money that we received from the state. Just a little bit of FY '20 and '21 payments voucher, um, during the month of August. We did receive one installment of the 2019 tax levy. This was a very large installment, a little over $2 million. So $15.3 million collected to date, so a 61.9% collection rate. If you notice, the prior two years were 70.32 and 72.53%. So, one thing that's happened too over the last couple of years is the timing of our tax receipts has changed dramatically. So, um, this year, you know, that, uh, significantly lower, um, than the prior years. So obviously that impacted our revenues in all of our funds, so revenues in the Ed and TORT fund were lower than average because of that. Um, we did receive $38,000 of fiscal year 20 payments and $135,000 of fiscal year 21 payments during the month of August. And we did receive, um, a $4,000 grant for equipment and supplies related to our food service operations. Fran and I saw a grant, and Fran wrote for that, and so she did receive some money to be able to use to purchase some of the equipment for the meal delivery. So that was a nice positive. In the O and M fund, again, revenue's lower because of property tax receipts. And we did, um, receive a little over $1,000 of, um, money for our CARES Act grant based on expenditures. And again, transportation fund, those revenues fluctuate significantly. We did receive the final fiscal year 20 payment, $136,000, and no FY '21 payments voucher yet. Expenditures in the TORT fund and Ed fund were lower. And again, in the, um, O and M comparable to the prior year. And then again, in the transportation fund, difficult to really, you know, compare one year to the next because of the COVID, lack of COVID-related payments. So we have questions on August. Okay, we'll go on to September. Now we are up to date. We received $128,000 from the state during the month of September. There was just a little bit, uh, $3,000 of fiscal year 20 payments left to receive, and $222,000 of fiscal year 21 payments voucher, but we have not received yet. We did receive two installments of the tax levy that totaled $8 million. So total, uh, taxes collected, uh, by the end of August, or September, were $23.3 million. That's a 94.45% collection rate, um, compared to 94.5 and 95.1 the prior two years. So now we're back on track. And again, we continue with, um, you know, COVID and everything it's doing to our economy, and we're still, at that point, we were still in remote learning, so not having transportation and things like that. And Ed and TORT funds revenues are comparable now to the prior year averages because property tax is now aligned with the prior year. We received $7,888 of fiscal year 20 payments and $120,000 of evidence-based funding for fiscal year 21. And there were $3,000 of fiscal year 20 payments still not received yet, and $59,000 of fiscal year 21 not received. In the O and M fund, again, revenues are comparable, and that's because property tax receipts now align with the prior years. And then revenues in the transportation fund, again, continue to fluctuate. There are $162,000 of fiscal year 21 payments voucher. That is higher. You notice, last year it was $136,000. So right now, um, we filed our, um, first transportation claim, but we are going to go back and revise that with final numbers, so that may change. But if, uh, if we're on the same trend, we're actually getting more money this year than last, and that may be a result of claims into the state were lower because so many people, um, went on remote and weren't paying for transportation to the state, may have had more money to distribute. We may have gotten higher, um, ratio, proration there. So we'll wait until we get the final one, but right now it looks a little bit higher. In the Ed and TORT funds, expenditures are lower than the prior year averages, both with and without the contingencies. O and M fund is 16.72% spent to date. It was 19% spent to date last year. And again, transportation fund, our expenditures are lower, again, because we have not paid for any transportation services as of the end of September. The one other thing that I wanted to, um, point out, and if you, look, you'll start to see that our fund balances have gone up, and that's because obviously we're getting a lot of tax revenue and not, don't have as many, um, you know, it's, we start having, we're at one of our higher points in terms of fund balance now, and then that will dwindle as we go through the year. But, um, in the lunch report, um, one of the things there right now, um, we are, our revenue, our expenditures are exceeding our revenues for a couple of reasons. Number one, we have the shift to a different meal program and a different reimbursement program. So we're not receiving National School Lunch Program receipts, we're receiving, um, the summer food service reimbursements. We're not, um, uh, providing meals for as many kids as we typically do when students are in session, even though they're free to all. And so our, um, our labor is greater than, our labor costs are greater than the amount of meals that we're actually providing and receiving revenue for. So we will be looking at that to see what we can do to either drive participation or what other, um, things we need to do to try and offset that. Does anybody have questions?
So that, that piece about two things, the transportation.
Mm-hmm.
We're expecting it to come in lower than, lower than normal this year as a whole thing?
Yes, because we've been in remote learning, but now, again, so we weren't, um, right now, we haven't paid anything because we still need to amend our contracts. So last year, what we did is we paid a certain percentage for the time when we weren't utilizing the transportation, but kind of a fixed, paying the companies for a fixed cost. We did not do that with the special ed transportation provider because we could not come to an agreement. I'm working with both of the, both providers for this year. One of the things, now we've already pivoted to, um, back to remote, so we're going to be working out what happens, because again, now the bus company has geared up and called back their people, and they can't, you know, be laying off for two weeks and then bringing back and, and, you know, being able to, again, pivot as we need to if they're not giving their, their drivers some sort of guarantee of that they're going to be working. So we're going to be working through that.
Okay, and then, um, the school lunches, so even though, this is the U, the National School Lunch Fund, I'm trying to just understand. So previously, it was the National School Lunch Fund that we, that we would get reimbursements for serving at-risk kids?
National School, yes.
Okay, and then the USDA adjusted that program, or is it the new, or did they create a new program?
No, no. So right now, because you can feed everybody, we're not seeing, receiving reimbursement through National School Lunch Program. We're receiving it through a different program.
Have we started getting those reimbursements yet?
We have gotten a few, yes.
Oh, okay, cool. And so you mentioned something about lunches being free for everybody.
Yes, lunch and breakfast for every child 18 and under.
Every child 18 and under.
Regardless of income.
Awesome. Cool.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, strategic plan.
So, uh, just very quickly, um, we started the process, and then COVID hit, and so it kind of was, uh, uh, on hiatus. But, um, I think we're at a point now where we're going to move forward, and so, uh, we're going to be creating a survey around some of those focus areas that were developed, and, uh, get that survey out to our school community, get responses, hopefully get that information back to the board for the 17th. And then from there, we'll, uh, start developing focus groups to drill down into those responses and getting feedback so that we can hone in on those key areas and start developing the, the goals and, um, you know, the, uh, the plan going forward.
Any comments or questions?
I'm excited for the strategic plan to kick back up. I know there was a lot of excitement, myself included, in the community around it, and it was like, woo-hoo, and then COVID. And so I'm super stoked for it to kick back up again. And so I'm super stoked for it to kick back up again. Very excited.
I agree. And I also commend you for taking that on amidst all of this. I think that's great that we're pushing that forward, dreaming of a day past COVID.
But it's really good because we do still, we got to think about five years, even though it's really hard to think past December.
Okay, I had one other discussion item and it had to do, Leo, with your email. Did you get my email?
I did.
Okay. So I just wanted to give you the opportunity just to kind of talk about what you wanted to talk about. But I also do feel that this is probably a topic that gets pushed off to the policy committee for their review rather than having a large open debate about, you know, I think people can chime in, just very, try to keep this conversation brief.
Yeah. And I know that the, I'm not sure where the policy committee is at with everything. So our public comment policy doesn't call out like an if situation of like, if we're in remote, we accept comments via email. And I, I myself have been confused. Are we accepting comments via email? Are we not accepting them via email? And I know that it is posted when we post the meetings. But I wonder, especially since we have talked about this going on for longer, if we should adjust that to speak to if we are in a situation in a, and maybe not pandemics or, but adjust it to account for that. So an if, when situation. If we are in this situation, we're accepting email comments. If we are not, you know, because another piece of it, we were in such a small area previously that we really could, had to limit the number of people. And that kind of really limited the ability to do public comment. So I just, I just think we should take a look at that policy and adjust it for moving forward. It has been, I've been confused by it and I know some, some other folks have been as well.
So I think originally that, I mean, obviously it came into play when we were fully remote with everybody at home on Zoom for our board meetings. And there was really no other way to have meaningful public comment. Then when we reconvened in person is kind of when I was like, you know, I wanted to have public comment returned to more of a traditional sense. We let it continue on a meeting or two after we had come together again in person, just because of the topic, the hybrid learning plans and so many questions and comments on that. And then once the board had kind of finalized its decision on that, that's kind of when I said, no, we're going to go ahead and just return to our standard format for public comments. And now that we're back here, I think it's even more conducive to that. The bill, the space in here is adequate for, for social distancing. There's also, if there were a need to have more people here that wanted to comment, they have the additional room that has the video services in there that, that people can watch the meeting. So there's overflow of space there. So I think we have the capacity to allow that and to do it in a very safe manner. And so I'd like to not have the emailing of comments that we read. I think they get, can get repetitive if it's a topic that multiple people comment on. Because what you'll have when a person comes in person, I agree with what so-and-so said, but I'll add these points. Instead of 45 minutes of, of Kevin reading, long emails from people and, you know, you know, it, it extends the meeting time long on those occasions. So I'd like to be uniform about what we're doing. And if we're here meeting in person, I, I would appreciate public comments to be here in person. You know, that's my personal opinion, you know, on that. But we can certainly, you know, move that to policy committee for some additional discussion.
Yeah, I think I just maybe missed when we discussed it about the pivot back to email or back to in-person.
Yeah, we didn't, it wasn't.
I think I missed, I think I missed that.
Yeah. And it wasn't really a decision, a board level decision. It's kind of a lot of it is put on, on the board president. If this situation happens and if you want to do this and you want to limit 20 minutes here and you want to, there's a whole lot of little provisions in that thing. So it's kind of a lot of, you know, I wanted to be fair to people who were at home when we were remote. But I think we want public comments here in our boardroom, in our, in our meeting and not coming to us in that format. I think they're more meaningful when the person is here sharing their thoughts and opinions than when they're not.
Yeah. And maybe we adjust that policy in that, in that way.
If it will be, if it were to be remote, again, it will go out in the announcement, you know, if we're opening that up as an option, it would go out in the meeting announcement like we have done.
Yeah. So there's just nothing about that in the policy right now.
There's nothing and I, you know, I, I think policy, we, we, I don't know if we want to tweak every policy for the pandemic.
Right.
So if there's some, and this is what we can talk about in the policy, is there some just kind of general line or, or something we can add that kind of covers that? Whether it's a pandemic situation or some other situation, then, you know, that, I think that's what we need to look at.
Yeah, that's, and that's, and that's kind of my point. And then also that I, I missed that discussion. And I don't want us to come off as not being transparent. And it, it was hard to figure that out. And, you know, I don't want, I don't want to jump to, because I think we were doing all the things that we can possibly do to be as transparent as possible. So I want to make sure that that is, that we are doing all those things. So, and it would be nice as a, as a board member to be able to look at that policy and be like, oh, okay, we're in a limited capability for whatever reason that may be. Our, our meetings are, or our comments are emailed, whatever that may be. So. That's, that's my point. And it, it was just a lack of direction and a lack of ability to kind of go for like, what happened? It did just kind of change.
Right. So I think that's what, that's what we'll do is our next policy committee will, will add that policy on for a review. Any other comments, thoughts or questions on that? Okay, we have one action item and it is a change to our fee schedule for a change in the yearbook fee for Westmont High School. Did we talk about this at the meeting before?
We, we, I mentioned it to you at the agenda. Actually, the fee's going down. Then what was approved last spring, the high school is using a different vendor. And so actually the yearbook will cost less. So we're asking the board to approve a new fee that's less than what was originally approved.
Okay, very good. I'm sure everyone will be happy with that. All right, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the change in yearbook fee for Westmont High School for the 20, 20, 20, 21 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
All right. And then we'll move forward with the superintendent's report.
Just a couple of items in my report. First, student recognition. Every year, the school has put together a list of events that school board members are asked to be representatives at. This year for the 2021 school year, the number of events obviously are fewer than past years. And that form was circulated, but if there's still, is an event that a board member would like to sign up for, just let Shannon know and she can add your name to the list. And then the school report card data will be released on October 30th. Currently it's embargoed. They did share preliminary data with the school districts and our data looks good, but obviously different because we don't have the state testing results because we didn't do the state testing. And so there's some information that's not contained on it. But at the November 17th board meeting, I will share the report card data with the board. And then one last thing, we've mentioned this a couple of times, but related to COVID-19, you know, everybody needs to do their part. So please, you know, social distance, wear masks, wash your hands. We need to slow down the spread.
Any questions or comments on the superintendent's report? Are there any board reports this evening?
I just want to mention something. We all got one of these in our packets today to the newer board members. This is actually the legislation that other school districts want to bring to the IASB to get the IASB's approval. So the IASB will lobby for them in Springfield. Okay. I don't know if I'm still the delegate.
Yes, you are.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I actually go and vote on them. But if you look at page four, it kind of looks like this. You got it right there? Okay. So these are the topics that there, the other school districts want to bring forth and they're labeled in there, in your packet here. If you want to read them, go ahead. If you don't, you know, that, that's up to you. And then what you'll see at the end of each one is they give you a recommendation whether we should adopt or not to adopt. And yes, sometimes we follow the recommendations, sometimes we don't. In the past couple of years, there's been some very controversial ones about arming teachers and allowing teachers with guns and so forth. I don't see any of that on here. This all looks pretty straight up and reasonable to me from what I've seen. But just so you can see it, just so you can know it, if you want to read through it, if you have any questions, you know, please ask me. Okay, maybe I'll take it up before. I don't even know how I'm going to vote this year. I've got to figure that out because normally it's at the tri-conference and normally on a Saturday morning at the tri-conference, I would go into this meeting room with the other delegates from the IASB. It's really not that hard. But if you want to just take a look at it, let me know if you have any questions on anything or if you're really very strong about something, let me know. That's all I have.
Anything else for board reports? Any public comment? Okay, future meetings, we have the Manning PTO, November 2nd at 7:00 PM. Reminder, no school and a reminder, of course, to vote on November 3rd. Westmont Junior High School PTO meeting, November 11th. Westmont High School Senior Pictures, November 12th, 16th and 17th. And it says 3:00 PM. And our next school board meeting is November 17th at 6:00 PM here at the Village Hall. The chair will entertain a motion. Oh, do we need closed session? Do we need anyone? Okay, so we will not be having a motion for closed session. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
You've been waiting to do that, haven't you?